All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our city commission meeting tonight. And I would ask if you could just please silence your turn off your cell phones. And remind everybody that our meetings are televised every day on channel two at 6:00 PM and midnight, and also available for viewing on YouTube. And we'll go ahead and start off with our pledge of allegiance, followed by silent prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I have a first consideration of previous meeting minutes for old business meeting minutes from May 14th, 2024, regular meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from May 14th, 2024, regular meeting.
Second.
All right, Mr. Smith, the second, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bader.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed, five to zero. Moving on to new business, public comment. Sir, do we have any?
We do not.
Okay. Then we'll move right along to general items. Safe streets and roads for all Vision Zero action plan update.
Commissioner, Commissioner, the Public Works Director, Brian Faust, will sit in on, yes, some guests this evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The City of Leavenworth did apply for and was awarded a $350,000 planning grant to develop a safe streets and roads for all. That's SS4A, Vision Zero or Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. The main goal of Vision Zero is to improve roadway safety by significantly reducing or eliminating roadway fatalities and serious injuries. The action plan will be used to identify and prioritize a set of Vision Zero street projects and potential safety walk, excuse me, system-wide safety programs. The action plan will also provide the documentation necessary to meet the requirement for the City of Leavenworth to apply for future safe streets and roads for all discretionary grants. This evening, we have been working with WSP and Mr. David Church with WSP and Anthony Gallo from Kimley Horn are here this evening to advise yet.
Cool deal. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to present this information before you. I'm David Church and project manager. And we just have a presentation ready for you today. This is the agenda we're going to cover, and so we'll get right to it here. We've been working with City of Leavenworth staff, Penny Holler, Mike Stephan, Brian Faust, Julie Hurley, and then our consultant team of WSP and Kimley Horn. But we've also, we also have a technical advisory committee made up of some of the core team members, but also some key folks within the community. For instance, Superintendent Adams with USD 453. We have Miranda Agnew with the, she's the director of the Interfaith Community of Pope. Sergeant Brandon Mantz with the Police Department, Guidance Center, Parks and Rec, and so on. So they've been very helpful through this process. So what is Vision Zero? Well, Brian explained the purpose is to get to zero fatalities and serious injuries in the City of Leavenworth. Over the past 10 years on Leavenworth streets, there've been 17 people killed, 91 people seriously injured. And the unfortunate thing, and this is not unique to Leavenworth, but things are on the rise. Serious injuries and fatality are on the rise. And if you look at the information, not only fatal and serious injury, but like over 1,000 of injury and possible injury within that 10-year period. So if we focus on preventing those fatal and serious injury, it's going to affect a reduction in all of the serious crashes. In the state of Kansas, as of last week, there've been 110 deaths, which is tragic. The good news is that's 19% less than this time last year. So a lot of the things that KDOT's doing, a lot of the things that the cities and counties are doing are making a difference. And that's what we're here to help with, is to make a difference in Leavenworth. We're following what's called the Safe System Approach, which is, was developed by the Federal Highway Administration and part of their National Roadway Safety Strategy. The action plan that we're working with the city on has several components, one of which we did a best practice literature review, which we've completed. We've completed the data analysis that we'll go over with you momentarily. And we worked with our technical advisory committee on selecting focus areas to focus on, and we'll be talking about that. And then we'll be going into next, developing core safety principles and the implementation plan for the action plan, our next steps. How are we engaging the public? We, early on, we developed a project website, which we've had a lot of people go to the website and provide their comments. It, it provides them an opportunity to learn about Vision Zero and be able to stay informed. We had a quick poll that showed that early on, that not a lot of people knew much about Vision Zero. Some people did, but we feel like through this engagement, a lot of folks are learning about it, and we've been very happy with the support. We also asked, what are the three top things affecting your safety on the roadways in Leavenworth? Number one was potholes, but you know, that's what everybody thinks about, you know, when, when they're asked a question about transportation. But distracted driving, people driving too fast, lack of enforcement, drivers not yielding or stopping at intersections, and some challenges with sidewalks came up. And those, the good thing is, these align with a lot of our focus areas. So this is what's important to the public, and this is what we're focused on. Through the website, we have, the folks have an opportunity to come in and drop a pin with concerns at different locations about driving, walking, cycling, ride LV or, or others. So we've had 209 contributions to that. We'll be summarizing those, that information and using it to inform the planner. We've also had a series of pop-up meetings at different events that were already scheduled. And I've seen many of you at those events, so I appreciate your all's support. We have one tomorrow night, which is the late night under the lights bike race at Warren Middle School. We're also going to be at the Juneteenth Parade and Festival. And we're, we're starting to plan for the public open house at the Riverfront Community Center in August. So let's go over some of our safety analysis. I'm going to ask Anthony to kind of run through this stuff.
Sure. So we've developed what's called a high injury network, which is basically just mapping out where the majority of our fatalities and serious injuries are happening. Perhaps not surprisingly, it's on the busiest streets in the city. Fourth Street, 10th Avenue, Eisenhower, Spruce, stretches of 20th. So 58% of fatal and serious injury crashes occurring on just 9% of the street mileage in the city. And then we've also developed another tool called a high-risk network, which is looking at not necessarily crash history, but looking at crash risk, given various attributes and characteristics. The high-risk network generalized with high injury network. And what we see is that these busy arterial corridors, Metropolitan, Fourth Street, Spruce, 10th, those are your facilities that have the highest risk for fatalities and serious injuries. So we've also done that at intersection levels. What else we've identified, and we'll have all this documented for you all, the most dangerous intersections in terms of attributes and crash history. Looking at, we, the crash data that we have is pretty detailed. We can look at things like contributor circumstances, different types of crashes. So we can look at which types of crashes are more likely to be fatal and serious injury crashes. So none of these will be too surprising, but crashes that involve either a cyclist or pedestrian are much more likely to result in fatality or serious injury. Crashes where the vehicle overturns or is rolled over, same thing. We've mapped out where crashes are around the city, and we've broken this down by different types of crashes. I'll direct you here to the map on the right. It's a heat map of bicycle and pedestrian crashes. And what you'll see on the map is there's a few key locations where a lot of those are happening. Downtown, perhaps not surprisingly, but also a hotspot down near the high school, and then at the 10th and Limit intersection right nearby. Fourth and Eisenhower also sees a pretty heavy amount of bike ped crashes. I know there've been some recent improvements that have gone into place recently there. Also, just looking at where crashes are happening, are they happening at intersections or mid-block or along our highways? Heavier percentage of fatal and serious injury crashes happening at intersections, which is not too surprising, given the context of the city. Crap more, a higher percentage of fatal and serious injury crashes are taking place in those two census tracts that are noted here. These are tracts that are designated as historically disadvantaged communities by the federal government. So, you know, if all things considered, we would expect sort of an even breakdown across the city, but in these tracts in particular, relative to their population or area or several mile miles, they have a disproportionate amount of fatal and serious injury crashes happening.
And the same for, for bike ped.
Yeah.
As well, higher risk.
Yeah. When we look at driver age, this one also stood out to us that a high percentage of fatal and serious injury crashes happening, those under the age of 20, and then folks, older populations as well, of the age of 85. So that, that was, that's sticking out, and you'll see that as in our focus areas coming up. Driver impairment, this is pretty consistent with national statewide trends as well, but fatal and serious injury crashes are more likely to involve alcohol or drug impairment.
So we, we use that information and worked with our technical advisory committee to select different focus areas. The first is speed. The second is vulnerable road users, which are pedestrians and bicyclists. Next is impaired and distracted driving together. Young drivers, signalized intersections, and then arterial streets. And we met April 23rd and 24th here at the city with those different teams to focus in on those areas specifically and come up with some countermeasures, draft countermeasures. So the vulnerable road user information, as Anthony just showed, we kind of have these different areas of where they're focused in. We're also using a new tool, the KDOT, that was developed recently for KDOT called the Kansas VRU Safety Assessment Tool. WSP, the company that I work for, led that project. But it's not on the highway system entirely. It's on the whole transportation system in Kansas. So you can go to different cities and counties and see where there are risks and where there are bike and ped-related crashes on the system. We're going to use that as part of this project to develop a plan. Some different countermeasures, and Anthony, you might want to run through these.
Sure. So for each of these different focus groups, we're providing this series of potential mainly low-cost countermeasures to address either an infrastructure solution or a behavioral issue. So we'll run through a bunch of these really quickly. Some of them are fairly intuitive, but high-visibility crosswalks. So you see the, the zebra striping, the fluorescent signage, making crosswalks more prominent. Traffic calming, and that can come in a variety of forms, whether that's speed humps or narrowing of streets, street trees, adding medians, even adding on-street parking. There are some other cities around Kansas that have a traffic calming program in place for how citizens can request implementations and how that gets addressed. Bike lanes, there's, there are currently no on-street bike lanes in the city. They can come in all shapes and sizes, depending on, on how much protection we can afford to provide for, for users. So a few others, we'll just have noted here. There's a lot we can do with signal retiming, that you can provide dedicated time just for pedestrians to cross in advance when the vehicles get green. That's called a leading pedestrian indicator or leading pedestrian interval. Those are pretty effective. On the previous slide, David showed quick build deployments with like basic followers and paint. You can do a lot to just narrow the profile of an intersection and reduce the amount of distance that pedestrian has to cross, put them at less risk. Those can be built on the cheap. There is some funding available from KDOT to update the city's safety school plan. I mentioned a traffic calming program, implementing a program like that, making crosswalks more visible. Also, there's a deployment being constructed at Henry Leavenworth Elementary for a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, just want to press a button and, and it flashes activated by a pedestrian push button.
Yeah, when we looked at impaired and distracted driving, you know, a lot of these are, they're behavior related. So one in 10 fatal and serious injury crashes is a result of impaired driving, and nearly one in six due to distracted driving, and probably higher than that with all the distractions that we have. Impaired driving, this is where they're occurring. One thing that we've, we've been working with the police department on is, or at least the representative, is this hotspot on, on Spruce Street, kind of between the bowling alley and the drive-through liquor store, seems to be kind of a hotspot in there, so.
It's a dinosaur right there.
Okay.
Distracts him.
Dinosaur's distracting, yep. Good one.
So we're, yeah, we're working with the police department on, on this, providing this information. Distracted driving is really, you know, all over town, but you can see a propensity along Eisenhower here at some of the intersections as well. And so some of the draft countermeasures, one thing that we heard over and over again, and it was unsolicited, was that folks in Leavenworth run red lights. And, you know, we've heard that at the pop-up meetings, we've, and the data shows that. So one thing that we're recommending is some kind of a campaign that focuses on that to try to make people aware of it, and hopefully make them aware to, you know, watch and stop doing that. Retro-reflective backplates on your signals, those just help make the signals more visible. Working with bike and mat advocates on being aware of substance abuse and personal safety issues. Continued enforcement by the police department. And then maybe looking at hands-free laws or with regard to hands-free for cell phones and things like that are possibilities. Anthony, you want to talk about speed?
Sure. So speeding, not surprisingly, higher the speed, the higher likelihood of fatalities and serious injuries. It's not linear, the, the risk goes up exponentially. 20 miles per hour has actually been proven to be sort of a sweet spot of you go, if you are a pedestrian and you're hit, going below that, you're likely to survive. Above that amount, much lower likelihood of survival. I know there's 20 mile an hour streets in the city already, but obviously, speed correlates closely to fatalities and serious injuries. And you can see it here in the data that in terms of all crashes, speeding is only associated with 6% of crashes in the city, but 16% of your fatal and serious injury crashes, so nearly one in six, are the result of speeding. If you look at where speeding-related crashes are taking place all over the city, it's spread out kind of all over the place, along some of the major arterial corridors like 10th and Fourth, but really, really spread throughout the city as we see through the maps. Various countermeasures that can attempt to get at high speeds. We see the speed feedback signs that are out currently on K7 as you're heading in downtown. They're effective, putting more of those out. On the enforcement side, penalties, there can be, you know, there's some contention around what those look like, but also pairing that with high-visibility enforcement and making folks aware of that enforcement. Roundabouts are proven to reduce speeds. I know those can be a little bit contentious as well. One option to consider for residential streets or mini roundabouts, the screen capture here is from Overland Park, basically just taking a stop control intersection and putting a mini roundabout in the middle as opposed to completely reconstructing something for several million dollars. So the draft countermeasures that we're looking at here for speeds, again, traffic calming, and talked about that a little bit, because it also addresses bike ped issues, speed feedback trailers, quick build traffic calming, I mentioned that earlier as well. Roadway lane reallocations, like taking a four-lane undivided roadway and going down to three lanes, like was planned for Fourth Street. We'll get to that in a few slides, and then roundabouts.
Younger drivers, again, is a high-risk group. And so a third of fatal and serious injury crashes involve drivers 25 and under. Nearly one in five involve drivers 20 and under. So it's definitely a high-risk group. Where are these happening? Again, at, at a lot of your arterial major intersections and just along those arteries in general. Some, you know, some good things are that Kansas does have a graduated drivers license law. I think there may be an opportunity to kind of provide more information about that, make sure that parents or folks that are working with young drivers are aware of the, the requirements of the GDL. Something that is, I think, a great opportunity is a program called SAFE. It was started in southeast Kansas years ago, down in the Pittsburgh area. And it is a student-led program, high schools and middle schools. And they've found that schools or counties that have and cities that have safe programs in their cities, the, the, the number of crashes involving young drivers goes way down. And currently, Leavenworth City and Leavenworth County don't have any safe schools. So we feel like that's a real interesting opportunity. And the school superintendent is in discussions with the safe program folks about that. So some draft countermeasures include maybe getting a safe program at the high school and middle schools in Leavenworth, raise awareness of the GDL law, more information about cellphone usage. There is a, Kansas has a driver education toolkit that you can order for at no cost. And we also noted a couple of safe driving programs that occur each summer, and I think one's coming up in June. The other one just happened earlier this month. So great experience for those young drivers. And Anthony, you want to finish up?
Yeah, the, the last focus group, signals and arterials, this really is a overlap with a lot of the four previous ones that we've looked at. And again, just a very high percentage of crashes are taking place at the signalized intersections. There's about 40 of them in the city or along those major arterial streets. Probably skip, skip past this one.
Yeah.
Probably this one as well. But then for arterials, I mean, 60% of the crashes in the city, at 60, you know, more than two-thirds of the injuries are taking place on like six major streets in the city. And so the, the streets that are highlighted in black here, K7, Fourth Street, 10th Ave, 20th Street, Limit, Spruce, and Metropolitan are really the areas we're going to target and the signalized intersections along them.
And a lot of these focus areas that we've just talked about, you know, I've highlighted here, these are the problem areas on, on the arterials.
So we've touched on a lot of the potential countermeasures because they address other issues as well. This is retro-reflective backplates, as David had mentioned. The 10th and Eisenhower signal has these. I think that's the only signal in the city that has those currently. I think those were recently put in. Again, a lot can be done with just retiming of signals, including the amount of yellow time. If you make it longer or shorter, that can have an impact on people running the red light. Dedicated turn lanes at intersections, some cities have like an access management policy that dictates whether or not you have to put one in. Some considerations there with if you're going to make an intersection wider, if you have the space to do that. And then roadway lane reallocation, this is, I was mentioning this earlier. In some areas, it's referred to as a road diet, but this is taking a street. Typically, it's four lanes and then dropping it down to one lane each direction and a center turn lane, and then doing something else with the remaining space, whether that's providing a bike lane or providing on-street parking. Helps slow down traffic. In a lot of cases, it doesn't necessarily impact travel time or slow people down all that much. And so we actually put together a heat map. So the, what you're looking at here are all of the four-lane undivided roadways in the city. And basically, they're how applicable a roadway lane reallocation could be just based on the amount of traffic those segments carry. So there's a stretch of Fourth Street that's planned downtown for this reallocation to happen already. Probably some other stretches of Fourth Street you see in red that probably aren't the best candidates, but areas of 20th Street or Eisenhower or even 10th Avenue could be potential candidates. More than a little bit further study, but based on where this is taking place all over the metro area and around the US, could be, could, could be a good bank for a BUP type project. So again, we've, we've touched on a lot of these countermeasures, but leading pedestrian intervals and signal retiming, a lot can be done there on the cheap for improving safety for pedestrians and for drivers. Retro-reflective backplates, KDOT funding is available. That's also a very low-cost deployment. The pedestal signals downtown, we've heard some issues with folks not recognizing them, just making them more prominent to drivers. Roundabouts, again, can be a, a safe alternative to signalized intersections. In some cases, they're not, you know, not always the, the right call, but sometimes they can be a good improvement. And then adding left turn lanes, or we see a lot of in some of the intersections around the city, there's a left turn lane, but no left turn phase, so there's no green arrow, just the green ball. Folks don't realize that leads to a lot of crashes.
And then the roadway lane reallocation we just talked about, speed big feedback signs, the high-visibility crossings. There's not a lot of mid-block crossings across those arterials. And we, we had discussions just recently about, you know, is it really safe to cross mid-block? Well, the reality is that a lot of people do cross at mid-block. They're not going to walk half a mile to a signal to cross the street. They're going to cross where they feel like is the quickest for them. So really, the best thing to do is identify those locations and make it safe for them to cross. And also developing an access management policy for the city. So just wrapping up, next steps, our project schedule, develop the draft Vision Zero action plan or submit it to the city and the TAC in July. Planning for that open house to share some of that information with the public and get their feedback before we finalize the plan. Finalize the plan in September, and then we have some ongoing performance measure reporting to the FHWA that we're helping Brian with as well. So I just want to thank you for the time and attention. I know that's a lot of information and just want to ask if you have any questions.
Thank you. Everybody.
The graduated driver program, is that like driver's education or do they require driver's education?
So I think that's probably referring to, there are certain, like, if you're 14 years oval of age, you can get a farm permit, and then at certain points you can do, I think that's what they're talking about.
I thought it was a training program.
Until you're ready to go full-time, that's what they're talking about.
And we did find out from the school district that they do have a, one staff member that does teach driver's ed in the, in the high school.
Okay.
However, they, they feel like it's probably underutilized.
Okay.
So.
That seems to be, I get would be important.
So I noticed you went to Kiwanis. Would you come to Lyons and do the same presentation?
Absolutely. We'd love to.
Good. That'd be good.
When are these presentations going to stop?
Oh, when will they stop?
Yeah. When will we no longer be able to get you to come to an organization?
Oh.
And make the presentation?
I got the answer.
Well, you know, I volunteer for a lot of things, so I could, I could keep coming back for however long. But, but yeah, you know, the project, it kind of wraps up in September. However, the, you know, the, the whole deal is to get champions within the city that, that's important to them, like, like the owner of the bike shop, for instance. And to keep this going, because we can come up with recommendations, but you have to have those champions with the stakeholders in town and with the city folks that are ready to implement these things over time and go after funding. So this is not something that's going to happen in the next 10 years. It's something that's going to happen probably in the next 20 years to get to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Do you have a card, a business card that you can?
Absolutely. Yes.
Could be great.
Yeah, please.
Anybody else?
Yeah. I'll be calling for the hand.
Good. This is good. I'll call you.
Yeah, that's all right.
I've already got one.
All right, and then we go to item three, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, America 250 Patriots marker.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner introduced a guest this evening, Catherine West, who is the National Chair of America 250 with a request to the city that we'll talk about.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the chief said, my name is Catherine West, and I'm a member of the Captain Jesse Leavenworth chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Our chapter was founded in 1906 here in Leavenworth, and we have been named after Revolutionary War patriots. and we have been named after Revolutionary War patriot Captain Jesse, otherwise known as the father of the more famously known Henry Leavenworth. The National Society and our 300 chapters world ride have begun celebrations related to the semi-quintcentennial or the 250th anniversary of the founding of this nation. I have the distinct honor of serving the National Society as the National Chair of the America 250 Committee. One of the initiatives of this committee is to place America 250 Patriots markers, and I'm pleased to report that over 200 of these markers have been placed in 48 states and the District of Columbia. Later this fall, we will place markers in France, Italy, and Spain. As the first city in Kansas, Leavenworth is the appropriate city to have one of these America 250 Patriots markers. And the Captain Jesse Leavenworth Chapter would like to present this marker as a gift to the city and its citizens. The bronze marker reads, "This marker commemorates the men and women who achieved American independence. These patriots, believing in the noble cause of liberty, fought valiantly to found a new nation, 1775-1783." If our gift is accepted, the chapter would also like to host a reception following the dedication of the marker. It has been suggested that the marker could be placed in the light court outside these chambers. I believe you've been furnished with information about the DAR and the markers, including pictures from some dedications that I attended, including in Kodiak, Alaska, Boise, Idaho, and Butler County, Kansas. I'd like to express appreciation to the staff for meeting with us and for guiding us through this process. Thank you for the opportunity to present this proposal. The DAR and the Captain Jesse Leavenworth Chapter look forward to the special time in the history of the United States of America, and placing this marker will be a catalyst for future events. I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you.
So just briefly, Mr. Mayor, her team, Sarah and I came and we visited a couple of different locations. And it was our suggestion and recommendation, there's similar markers in the light court from World War II and Korea and Vietnam, and so it's probably a similar theme. So that was our recommendation. I think they selected a site location that they'd recommend that's out in the, that was provided as a package. So we're ready to answer whatever questions you have, we're looking to do that.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
I just think, congratulations on a national position.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's very cool.
Great presentation, loved it.
Thank you, Ms. West.
Then to proceed, I guess we need a motion to install?
To approve accepting the gift and allowing the marker to be put in the light court. And then we'll reach out at some point, work with her team about when the reception would be.
Okay.
I move that we accept the gift and authorize installation in the City Hall Light Court.
I second.
Motion to the second, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingula.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to bids, contracts, and agreements. Item four, consider approval to purchase municipal service storage, service center storage building.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, the interim police chief, Danny Ademus, will present this matter this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Martin, commissioners.
Good evening.
Police Department is here tonight along with Public Works Department to request approval to purchase a storage building that is 80-foot by 60-foot to be constructed at the municipal service center. The building will be used to house equipment and vehicles from both departments. Vehicles that are expensive and sensitive need to be kept out of the elements and secure along with the public works equipment. This item was originally approved in the 2022 capital improvements program in the amount of $150,000. Initial bids on the building exceeded the funding. And so the project was tabled and additional funds were added in 2023 capital improvements program for a total amount of $300,000. Staff revisited the building specs as prices continued to be more than we intended to, to need. And we were able to get three quotes, the lowest being from QSI, Quality Structures Incorporated, in the amount of $71,730. That is for the building. Additional funds will be necessary to have the building finished with the concrete floor and electrical work and things of that nature, so. In summary, we just request that you approve the purchase of the municipal service center storage building in the amount of $71,730 from QSI. I'll be happy to answer any questions about the project.
Go down, thank you.
Sounds good.
Questions?
Will this replace the, the facility that's out there now?
No, it's an additional building.
It'll be an additional, good, thank you. And this will be used for police departments exclusively?
So we're going to share the building, about half of the building will be the police department's use and the other half, the public works department.
Right.
I'm just going to make a motion.
Perfect.
I move to authorize the police department to purchase the storage building from QSI, not to exceed $71,730.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bautter.
Aye.
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 Motion passed five to zero. Thank you very much. And then we'll move on to item five, consider approval of design services contract for 2025 pavement management plan.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, our public works director, Brian Foss, will present this matter.
Well, again.
Again, as I've been this evening, it is to consider approval of a contract with Alfred Benish for the development of the 2025 pavement management plan and to finalize the level of service prioritization model. A pavement management plan is an asset management process used to effectively allocate resources and to maximize the service life of pavements. There are four basic pavement management strategies. First is preventative maintenance, we do the granite seal, chip seals. We've been using micro-surfacing in the past with not the success that we know for. Those treatments work good on roads that are actually in fairly good shape. You're keeping the good roads good. The second is major rehabilitation, and that's our melon overlay program. In 2024, that's what we did exclusively, is melon overlay. The third is reconstruction, and that's for streets that have got to a point where other treatments don't work. They basically have failed. And the fourth is stop-gap measures, and that's basically pothole patching, just keeping the roads serviceable. Advantages of a pavement management program include improving the quality of our street network in a financially responsible manner, data-driven, defendable project prioritization that helps maximize value and return on investment, and prioritize projects not just solely on PCI, which is pavement condition index, but considers other impacts to residents and motorists such as roadway classification, deterioration type, peripheral assets, traffic volumes, and other factors. It also implements a plan that considers immediate as well as long-term needs. For 2025, the pavement management plan and model includes developing a specific street list for 2025 with the majority of work involving melon overlay or major rehabilitation, and the remainder either granite seal or an ultra-thin bonded asphalt surface or U-VAS. We are not recommending micro-surfacing that was done in the past. And we also want to finalize a level of surface prioritization model with an implementation plan. This model will be used to identify projects starting in 2025. Alfred Benish has worked with Leavenworth since 2022 and does have extensive successful experience in helping communities develop a comprehensive plan. They also have an understanding of funding limitations and challenges working in communities of all sizes. The cost of the 2025 plan does come out of the 24 budget. And currently in 2024, there was $2 million budgeted estimates for 2024. In March of this year, we awarded a contract to Little Joe's for our melon overlay at 1.8 million. We will have change orders, we always do. We estimate a 5% for another $90,000. And the design of this plan for 89,800. So total estimated cost for '24 is $1,984,000. Staff does recommend approval of the design services contract with Alfred Benish and Company for developing the 2025 pavement management plan in an amount not to exceed $89,800. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anything from anybody?
It looks good to me. Thank you for keeping us on track with best practices as far as our roadways go. We appreciate that.
Yeah, I was thinking that earlier, I'm like, I'm glad he's got all that experience and everything, yeah.
Just question for me, the, the, the method of redoing the streets that you said we will not use?
Micro-surfacing is probably the choose all over. But we had a lot of streets that we put that down in the last two years and unraveled lots. And actually, the contractor, which is Vance Brothers, is warranting the work and they're going to come back and, and fix those streets. But we want it done right the first time.
Yeah.
And so this past fall, we actually went and looked at our granite seal that we've done in the past, our pressure pave that we've done in the past, the micro-surfacing that we've done. And we came to the conclusion that the granite seal and the pressure pave actually were holding up very well compared to the micro-surfacing.
Thank you.
See a motion then?
I move that approval of the design services contract with Alfred Benish and Company for developing the 2025 pavement management plan in amount not to exceed $89,800.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingula.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed five to zero, thank you. Case staff reports, Fire Department 2023 annual report.
Chief Burch.
Chief.
I'm glad it's been moving fairly quick tonight. That way, by eight o'clock. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I appreciate you coming to come and talk about the department a little bit. It's 2023 report, which was about to come out here last year for the 2022 report. So next year, we'll try to get in a little bit earlier in the year. Kind of go through it and just discuss the fire department, there's some numbers on here and stuff. This past year, we actually, first time since I was here, actually did a, a photo of the department, you know. There's a few people that's already gone from the photo there, but something we did. This comes, my chief officers, introduction, I have three, down below the three there, I've had three what we call ship commanders, they're the battalion chief rank. Aaron, William, and Chris, that's A, B, C, and C ship. And they actually run the, the daily operation on duty. So during the weekend, whichever ship's on, that's kind of, they certainly call me, or Mike Short, my deputy, but they're, they're the ones that, that are out on the top line. And of course, my deputy chief, Mike there, and then Andy Brooks. I won't say him, he's the fire marshal here. I did ask a lot about the stripes and stuff and just real quick what that is. It's kind of, the stripes are actually a ranking. So if you had two stripes, which we don't have that ranking, you'd be a captain. Battalion chiefs have three, deputy has four, chief has five. And then those little stars, for each one of those, that's five years of service. Do you see these guys all have 20, 25 years? I think this was, 2023 was a good year for it, really, you know. And I don't, I couldn't mention that bad word, it happened in 2020. But actually, if you recall, 2022 was a tough year because we were so short-staffed and stuff. We were just challenged with other kinds of pieces of work. But I think we're kind of, kind of out of that now and moving forward. One of, one of the things, like, you know, our dynamics has changed in the department. You know, we, we require, before we hire someone, they have to go through, and probably in all the total, probably that can be two semesters possibly. You could probably do it in one, but makes it a little tougher. But you have to go to a junior college somewhere and you can get what's called Fire One, Fire Two, Hazmat Operations, and then there's a physical fitness component also. And then, and then you have to be a licensed EMT. And that's probably the toughest part for the EMTs, at least it was for me on the medical side. So once they have those certificates, then they're eligible to be hired. So, and even though we hire people, the, the fire service traditionally, it's just, it's always behind that. It's, it's the more senior people teaching the younger people on calls is what I'm talking about out there on that truck. And then as, as the dynamics have changed, because we have, as we have more and more people with seniority that's retiring and stuff, it just gives us less actual experience out there in the field. You know, give you a couple examples and just something of that, you know, there's nothing, not that big a deal. But just things that if you've been there and done it before, you can kind of help. And let's picture this, you're running a call, let's say it's an EMS call. So you get an address and somebody's inside, maybe having a little difficulty breathing, or something of that nature. And you get there and you get off the truck with your EMS bags, and there's a fence around that front yard and there's two big old dogs barking at you. And what do you do? You open the gate and go on in? What do you do in that situation? Well, if you've been around it for a while, someone grabs a booster off, that's the fire hose, that's a red fire hose, and you have them crank up about 200 pounds of pressure. And you tell the guys that the EMS car will stay with you and you can put that water in the dog hocks, you keep them, the dogs will turn back if you get in the house. Just little things like that that you just get to experience. If any of you have went CPR, had CPR trained before, a lot of people get trained CPR. But if you've ever done it, that first time's kind of hard, you know. You just, you almost need someone else that's been there. You need to go for the, check for the breathing, check the poles, and sometimes you can go ahead and duck the pressures, you know. So, you know, we're, we're losing a lot of that, we're losing a lot of that experience and stuff. But that's, that's one of the challenges that we have in the dynamics of our department, you know. Get into response activity, we're probably up, we've got, we had 3187 calls last year. If it's up, I checked, we're up almost 100 from last year. Still averaging about 8.73 a day. Some days you may have one or two calls, some days you may have 14, 15 calls, but averages out, you know, 8.7. Our EMS, we're at 2164, which we're running about 68%. And actually, that's kind of low. Actually, a lot of departments, it's a little pushing a little bit over 70s. So we might have got 60,000 or so last year. So that's, that's, that's a good number to be at. And then I went ahead and just kind of threw in some other things there. You know, motor vehicle accidents, we have around 147. Rescue calls, 11. And example of that may be, we run a lot of times where someone be stuck on an elevator or something of that nature, a little bit, so we'll go down there. Water rescue, you have the boats, and that's where we'll get a call a lot of times. Occasionally, we've had things that, in fact, one time we had a car in the pond. It was kind of in front of St. Mary's up there. But range or intersection, but most of those are actually deployed to the, to the boat ramp, you know, for the river, some in the river or something. Harsh conditions, we run a lot of calls with maybe a gas line gets hit at a construction site, tooling those, and, or, or CO call, some of that nature is categorized, categorized under that. So as far as that fires and stuff, the civilian injuries, we had no deaths, that's good. We had seven civilian injuries last year. The next slide is incident totals and response times. And then if you look at the first one, it says incidents by fire stations. And actually, what that is, that is, that, it's not actually that station, it is that station, but our, we have our city divided up in three, and we have what we call zones. So like, at Station One, there's some, 101, 102. And if it comes in, this would be in Zone 207 or whatever, within Station Two notes, there's going to be first up. The other trucks, sometimes depending on what the call, they may be running into those zones also. So, you know, they're, they're, they have actual apparatus recorded as it runs. But those are the, those are the calls in that zone. So around Station One, it's 437, Station Two, 1623, and Station Three, 1130. The other little ring there is by each, each company. So battalion chief, Engine One, Engine Two, Engine Three. And Station Three is actually, has the most calls, as you can see, 1429. Station Two, we have two companies here, we have Engine to Engine, and then we have also the Quint there. The Quint runs EMS calls on the west side of 10th Street. And then, but a lot, a lot of times they go together. So some of them, so in other words, if Quint Two went totally away, it wouldn't add 1,034 calls to Engine Two, because a lot of those calls are going, going at the same time anyway. National stuff, looks at frac, what they call fractile response times, goals. And there's some other areas, there's the dispatch time, the dispatch is 911, what's your emergency? Till they hit the tone, the tone is out, that's dispatch time. Then we have the turnout time, that's from when we hear the tone, we actually get on the truck and out the door. And then of course, travel time. And the fractile times, what that is, is it's, it's 90%. So in other words, when they, when they do that, when we still, a few years ago, we actually had a contact, it was helping us. we actually had a kind of, it was helpless. They take off the outliers, so 10% high, 10% low. They take those off. And this here, the national is the fractile times of turnout of 120 and four minutes actual travel. And so you, when I do actual times there, you know, we look, we're doing really good. When we, when we try to look at the fractile times, it changed on us a little bit. It actually got, you know, the turnout, it went to like 220, and the travel time pushed over four minutes. Now I'm thinking, I don't like that fractile time. It looks good. But then I got to think about what it is. I think because it added time when we brought off the slowest and the fastest, we had a lot of calls where we get there fairly quick in certain areas. And so I think when we, when we cut that 10 off, 10%, it pushed our numbers up a little bit as far as times. At least that's my story, and I'm sticking to that. The next thing is risk reduction. And that's kind of the community risk reduction, CRRs, the term I have, people don't normally say fire prevention division or it's, it's community risk reduction. So that's what you're trying to do. And some of the things in that arena, other than mutual aid, is hybrid inspections. The guys are out now. We have roughly close to 1,400 hydrants in the city. And we flush, we actually turn on and flush a third every year when they comes around and move around. They go by, supposed to do a visual check on all of them each year to see if they see any obvious, maybe the cap's off or something of that nature, or if it needs to be painted, you know, take care of it or some, sometimes weeds and stuff around it. But they actually flow a third. And actually, in that way, if something's wrong, we can let the water department know, and they're real responsive about getting out there. We let them know what area in the city we're in every day. The other thing too, it also helps with the quality of water. Because sometimes, you know, it helps flush, kind of helps flush the system. So they like us doing that too. So we work with them, very good relationship with the water. Public education, actually thought it was, it's real close to last year, but that's going to be comprised of, sometimes we have people come to the stations, kids by the station. In October, usually is our busy month. We go to the schools and do education. And sometimes we get asked to go to a resident or a party. If someone's having, we don't do birthday parties at the station. But if someone's having a birthday party, for example, or Cub Scouts is at a, being at church, and they ask us to come by and we take the truck over there and do that. So we do those kind of things. Business inspections. Last year, we did 827 business inspections. We had 617 violations. Now that, that, a lot of those are small things. Maybe the extinguisher's out of date or something of that nature. And they may be several at one location. So, so we try to get those corrected. And usually it's just a letter and it gets corrected. Fire marshal business with them. And then plan reviews. The fire marshal in that division, you know, they, they look at the plans and work with the second floor here, you know, how on those plans and coaching stuff. And then last year, we did, we installed 20 smoke detectors. And you recall, we installed 30. But that just kind of has people, people call and ask on stuff, we're going to do that or change the battery. Something of that nature.
A lot of people realize you don't do that, that you, that you do that, realize that you do that.
Well, we try to get it out there a lot.
Say it tonight. Say it again.
Maybe, maybe it had some help from this plane.
That's right. You did.
I put the mutual aid here just on the slide. But basically, you know, we, we help other cities and they help us. For example, the grass fire we had, we had every, every department in the county here helping us. Very appreciative of that for brush trucks and things of that nature. But we, we went out last year. We went, we gave mutual aid 22 times last year, and then we received it 11 times. Probably District One in the Ford, we call for a lot. East of Stone, North End, we'll call for it. And they really, they really like getting off posts. You know, they don't get any fire calls. But that's, so they show up a lot of people. So we like. Training and development. This is something we need to really boost up a little bit. You know, even the ISO, we're supposed to have in fire training, 212 hours per firefighter per year. And when I did the division walkover, we're a little short on that. Sometimes I think our guys do a lot of training. I see them a lot sometimes. I often, when I keep trying, I always tell them, make sure you get it recorded, you know, in the system. So if you don't put it in, we can't pull it back out. ISO only looks at fire type stuff. So like the officer development would be counted and apparatus driver would be also. As far as fire with the ISO, they don't look at EMS or hazmat or, or technical rescue stuff anyway. But that's, that picture there is actually the prop that a couple of firefighters, you know, wanted to build. And we bought the materials and they, they, three or four of them out there working on it, built that's for roof ventilation stuff. So we've got a great bunch of guys. Last slide is capital improvement. In 2023, we, we replaced the back apron at Station One. And that was probably the biggest thing, wasn't it most costly, but it was the biggest thing. Stations, you know, are over 20 years old, Station One and Two. And so we actually, we have a lot of problems with them overhead doors and stuff. So we replaced those overhead doors. And then we did a building access control at Station One and Two, which makes it really nice. You know, it's so device, you get in and do the code. The main door admin is open during business hours. But, you know, it, it just, it just requires a little more security. You know, something, if the door's up, the apparatus is safe, someone just can't walk in and get into the station. You've got to have a code or something. So, so that's what we do there. So we got that in place. And then, yeah, that was the three major things this year. I talked rather fast. Do you have any questions?
Good.
No, you're good.
I just appreciate you. And as you know, my daughter, she was in a bonfire accident. So she's an advocate for fire safety, and you've always been a great job working with her, and I appreciate it. How is your supply of smoke detectors? Do you need her to?
We have, we have.
Do you plenty?
Yeah. Yeah, we just recently had some donations.
Oh, good.
I appreciate that. Staff wise, how you guys, you know, hold on?
Right now, we're, we're two down, technically four. We have two guys deployed National Guard, so that always helps us a little bit, but yeah.
How does the recruiting turn out when you go in advertising at St. Mary's?
Well, a lot of times, and I talk to people all the time. You know, coffee places, wherever I go, I talk to young people. You know, a lot of them just never even think about being a firefighter or something. And not everybody wants to go to college. And I just mean, and, you know, it's more a trade. You know, it's just, it's basically training that they go to. So it's not like you're in a semester. But, but it's about a semester to get you an EMT. So, yeah, I don't know who'd ever fully apply from St. Mary's specifically, but yeah.
Thank you.
Lou? Yeah, thanks for the report. Appreciate it. Okay.
I only have four stripes on my uniform. I'll be getting more stripes tomorrow. Which has five. I did not know that. We take care of that immediately tomorrow morning.
Right.
It's a total shock.
That's funny. We'll move on to our consenting agenda.
Exactly. I moved, we approved claims from May 10, 2024 through May 23, 2024 in the amount of $881,700. I'm sorry, $881,794.48 net amount for payroll number 10 effective May 17, 2024 in the amount of $452,3590. And that includes police and fire pension in the amount of $7,491.38.
All right, motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion passed five to zero. And then we'll go around the horn.
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I know you're aware of that, but I want the public to know that the announcement for the city manager position went public on Friday. And so the firm is collecting applications. Ms. Lantern informs that we have six or seven already. So that process is well underway. That, the, the application process will stay up for about a month. And then we'll turn our attention to guiding you through, looking at all the resumes. So that's ongoing. Away we go to pick a replacement. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, I appreciate you getting done well before eight o'clock. And I actually did have a question.